Virginia and Perozian. Okay, we'll move on to the special meeting of the Glendale City Council being called to order at 3:17 on October 19th, 2021. And again, City Council as well as Board and Commission meetings will continue to be closed to the public for in-person attendance. You can stream, you can watch these meetings on Glendale TV, Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, ATT, U-verse, Channel 99, or Amazon Fire Devices using a free app called Screenwave and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. Public comments, please call 818-937-8100. And with that, roll call, please.
Councilmember Agujanian.
President.
Brotman.
Here.
Kusakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Here. And your report?
Ladies and gentlemen, for the Tuesday, October 19th, 2021, special public meeting of the City Council is posted on October 13th, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, and what's next?
Community Development regarding parklet design and installation for Montrose Shopping Park, Downtown Glendale and Alfresco Dining Program Extension and Funding. A, motion approving parklet design for Montrose Shopping Park. B, resolution to dispense with competitive bidding and authorizing the purchasing administrator to issue a purchase order, service authorization, in an amount not to exceed $400,000 with VX Design Solutions for the fabrication and installation of parklets in the Montrose Shopping Park in Downtown Glendale. C, motion shifting already allocated funding from other measures S funded business recovery strategy programs to the Alfresco Program. D, motion providing staff direction regarding Alfresco Dining Program time, extension, and participation costs.
Thank you. Mr. Devine?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. As a, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the public health orders that severely restricted indoor dining and retail activity, staff quickly mobilized and implemented Alfresco Dining essentially by installing K-rails on a temporary basis to help offset the fiscal financial impact of the restrictions and the protocols. This program was well received by restaurant patrons and restaurant owners, and Council has indicated a desire to continue this program on a more permanent basis. As such, Mr. Bradley Calvert, our Assistant Director of Community Development, will present a report to seek direction on the new design that the staff has come up with, as well as the cost of installation, primarily in the Montrose Shopping Park Association, Park, and the downtown area, as well as cost of participation, seeking direction from Council. Mr. Calvert?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of City Council. As acknowledged, we are here looking for a number of items for direction from Council regarding the Alfresco Program. As highlighted, we were directed to develop some long-term strategies for both Montrose and downtown. We are bringing forward the designs today of what that could look like for the Montrose Shopping Park, maybe some ideas for downtown as well. We're also looking for direction to redirect funding from Measure S Recovery Strategies to what has not been used into this program to ensure that we can end up with the best result, and also to approve a contract for installation. We're also looking for direction on the fees, what this should cost in terms of the businesses who will be using these parklets in, in Montrose. And then we are also looking for an extension for the existing downtown installations as they are today, and we'll kind of walk through and explain why that is the case. So this is a, a plan looking at Montrose. You can see in the blue boxes that are highlighted, these are the proposed locations for the long-term parklets. You can see there are a total of five that are being proposed here. There are also some other additional considerations for some of the smaller installations that are there, but those are something that we're going to take up at a later date. The goal of what we're bringing forward today was to develop essentially a prototype design for these five locations that would allow us to deploy as quickly as possible. As you recall, as part of that initial direction, Council also directed us to engage in a long-term urban design plan and, and strategy with the Montrose Shopping Park Association. And that is where we'll consider some of the other alternatives for where we had what we would consider atypical installations for the parklets in Montrose. A total of five locations. If we can get that to move, there we go. This is a perspective view of what these installations could look like. We met with the Montrose Shopping Park Association. They also developed the task force to help us walk through this, identify their priorities, hopefully achieve an aesthetic quality that, that matched the vision of the Montrose Shopping Park Association, the merchants, and the task force. We met on two separate occasions. The first occasion was to understand what their priorities were from an aesthetic and use perspective, what we would, what we could accomplish within a reasonable budget. And then the, the second meeting was to look at these prototype designs. From our initial meeting, there were a couple ideas that were expressed in terms of having kind of softer materials. That's kind of reflected here in the wood, the walls that, that frame this parklet. Opportunities to incorporate overhead weather protection, so in the summer months to be able to provide some shade. So this built this in rather than relying on the existing tables and umbrellas that are out there now. This gives a little bit of a more uniform look, gives us an opportunity to be able to mount these kind of canvas tarps that would be over the top at an eye level that would make sure it would not obstruct the existing businesses that may be behind it. There was also an interest to be able to string lights from these to add a bit of decoration and adornment, and that is one of the purposes for these poles as well. The canvases do not have to be on all installations. That is something we can decide on a location-by-location basis. Some have a very nice tree canopy that help protect them already, but this does provide sort of a sense of enclosure. You can see incorporated along those walls also some railings that creates a little bit of visibility, so it not, does not erect just kind of a, a solid wall around the space. We anticipate this would take up about two parking spaces. This leaves us with a little bit of room to the side for doors, or cars to be able to pull in and doors to be able to open up. We also see as an opportunity to maybe locate planters around the perimeter to, again, kind of soften those edges. You'll probably see in your packet, there were a number of scale of, of these designs, different sizes. That is something that we're still continuing to explore, trying to understand what the cost implications of each of these are based on their scale and how we can fit that into the budget. And, and that's something we can touch on, on shortly. The green that was incorporated into this was really to kind of reflect that design aesthetic from the Montrose Shopping Park Association. You can see there's an opportunity to brand these as well. These will vary based on the parking location. Some are a little bit wider, some are a little bit shorter than others, but essentially this is that prototype design that was developed. We had presented this to the task force, the Montrose Shopping Park Association Task Force. It was very well received. A couple comments regarding color and making sure that these canvas canopies can be removed in the event of a windstorm, maybe they're not desired. These are something that are relatively easy to, to install and take off. Looking at that from a plan perspective, you can see this is one of the smaller versions. They're still taking up about two parking space, spaces. The goal here is to make sure that the doors can still open, maybe opportunities for vegetation. We have seen some of the installations that were out there previously, the, the K-rails, they had done a fantastic job of kind of greening that environment, so we wanted to leave a little bit of room to be able to do that again here. Again, with depth is going to vary depending on, on the locations, but this is kind of the prototype design that was developed. Part of the decisions today, as well as to dispense with competitive bidding to install these, the objective here is this is essentially a kit of parts that is developed. We worked with Studio 111, who helped us plan the original K-rail installations, but, but these designs utilize essentially what we would consider a kit of parts from, as acknowledged in the motions, VX Design Solutions, and being able to work with them to install these, again, with the intent of trying to create a rapid deployment. We did remove the K-rail installations in this past week. That was in response to the Arts Fair that was coming up, and, and our hope and our intent here is to be able to deploy these new installations as quickly as possible, pending Council direction this afternoon. This would be in a contract for $400,000. This would be to allocate money for both the downtown installations and the Montrose. We would come back at a later date with the downtown installations, and again, I'll explain that in just a moment. This would allocate existing unused Measure S COVID recovery funding to, to add into that pot of money to be able to deploy these in both downtown and Montrose. Another point we would like to get direction from Council on is the fees associated with these parklets. While we are, while we are using Measure S and COVID recovery funding to, to install and deploy these, we are also asking direction for the fees associated with them in general. Per the report, what we've started as a conversation point and a recommendation is the $224 permit fee for sidewalk dining plus $2.24 per square foot, and that would be the size of the parklet. For every square foot of the parklet, $2.24 would be charged. This would come out to be approximately, based on the sizes of the parklets developed thus far, $1,568 per year. We would also be asking to include the lost revenue from the two parking spaces that would be occupied by these parklets, and that comes out to be approximately $4,500 per parking space per year. So total, we would be considering a, a fee of $10,568 on an annual basis. Now, the Montrose Shopping Park Association, the merchants who have been participating in this program are aware that some fee would be charged. What we would like to do is, based on the direction from Council today, is reengage with them to make sure that this is a fee that they believe is, is something that they could afford, and if not, we could go back and look at are there other locations that we could deploy these. The locations of the parklets on the original map shown were, were, were based on restaurants and businesses who did not have ample room for sidewalk dining. That is why those five locations were chosen, but there could be opportunities for other locations if anyone decided, decided to decline to participate because of the fees associated with it. But that $10,568 is, is to kind of start as a conversation point with, with Council. And then lastly, we're, we're seeking to extend the current installations in downtown, the K-rails that are along Brand Boulevard now, until February 21st of 2022. Recognizing that we were kind of working against the clock with the Montrose Shopping Park Association Arts Fair, knowing that those K-rails were going to come out at an earlier date, we wanted to prioritize those and get those deployed as quickly as possible. As such, we have met with the Downtown Glendale Association's Task Force, who will be working with us on this. They have given us their priorities, but we did prioritize the Montrose locations first. We need a little bit more time to work with downtown in order to develop their designs. So we're asking to extend those current locations until February 21st of 2022. We'll continue to work with that stakeholder working group, and really, that gives us opportunity and time to get those Montrose locations installed, since they have been removed in the past week. Downtown could still continue theirs, and we would anticipate their, their installation to be after the holidays in January of 2022. We would return with those designs to Council as well to seek approval for those prototypes that were developed. So this afternoon, we have three alternatives. The first, looking at approving the design, the contract, and the funding allocation, providing direction on the fees per that kind of conversation starter that we, we included in your report and in the presentation, and to extend the timeline for the existing downtown installations. Alternative two could be to reject the, reject or modify the design of the Montrose parklets, or the contract, or the funding. This would result in ending the program or delays in, in getting that installed. We are looking at a timeline of within the next few weeks of being able to start that installation process in downtown if Council desires to move forward with what's been presented today. Alternative three would be any other alternative not presented by staff that Council may consider. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Agujanian.
You're, in this drawing which I'm looking at, you're showing some electric lamps or lights. Where do we get those? Or if anybody can answer, where do we get those, where do we get electricity from?
Right now, we do not have electricity proposed in these designs. This could be battery-powered. Currently, there are outlets in some of these locations that are nearby, that there are streetlights that are connected, or, or lighting on some of the street trees that are connected to that, so that could be an opportunity as well. That is a detail we would need to work out a little bit more, but we would not be including electrical outlets in these parklets.
But anyway, if you get it from electric poles, then who will pay for it?
There are existing outlets along the street, and again, we could also consider battery-powered lighting as well.
No, I know, but if it's not battery-powered, you get the electricity from the electric poles of the city for a private com, private restaurant.
The outlets that are there today belong to the city, correct?
Yeah. So that's also, did you consider the expense of those lights?
Uh, we would expect, we expect that to be pretty minimal, since we're just looking at a couple string lights. There would be a relatively minimal impact to that.
Now, the rent we will collect, let's assume whoever would come forward and would rent the parklet, right, the space. So where the money gonna go when you collect that rent, which you said $10,000, whatever?
Part of that would go to offset the lost revenue for the parking, and the rest would be the permit fees, which would cover staff time to process and review these.
No, but you-
Similar to any, any sidewalk dining permit.
But you are spending money based on Measure S. Take the money from Measure S to create this.
Correct. We are using COVID recovery strategy money to construct that, construct these, yes.
Yes. And then, when you collect the money, you have to return to the Measure S bank or the account, isn't it?
The money collected would be to cover the permit fees and would be to cover the parking spaces. The money that's been allocated here, or the additional money that we're requesting be allocated, would be to pay for the construction of these as part of COVID recovery, but also as a long-term placemaking element for both downtown and Montrose.
I didn't get an answer. I'm saying, you take the money from Measure S. If you get any money, you have to pay back the Measure S account.
If, if that's the Council's direction, we could do that. The, the Measure S money for COVID recovery was intended for grants and these types of things, but if the Council, if, if that's your direction, we could use that to pay back Measure S, and then going forward, if there's a long-term program going forward, use those, that revenue to offset the loss in parking to the parking fund.
That's what-
But that's Council's direction.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I do have-
Anyone else have a question?
Madam Mayor, I do have two callers on the line.
Okay, I, I have just two questions. I will take the callers. Mr. Calvert, you mentioned that there is a 24 and a 28 seating space and a 14, 12 to 14. Who decides how big that space is? And you mentioned, do they both take two parking spaces, or will the 12 to 14 only take one, or will the 24, 28 take more?
The final size will be determined by the final cost. We have a range, an, an estimate range right now that's between approximately $20 and $50,000 for these based on their size. So we would size these based on the budget that would be allocated. Either way, they're going to take up two parking spaces, though.
For either size?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, that's interesting. And can the merchants share, like if there's a restaurant next to a business, is it just the restaurant that's going to be paying the fees, or is that something that needs to be worked out?
That is likely something that would need to be worked out between the two businesses. We have heard interest from some non-restaurants that they would like to be able to use those. Depending on who it is that would be paying the permitting fees, we would ask them to work that out with neighboring, neighboring businesses.
Okay. And for Mr. Lanzafame, right now, where, don't, don't some of the parking rev, doesn't, doesn't, don't, doesn't, doesn't some of the parking revenue go back to Montrose?
You know, I'm gonna ask, the, the city manager probably has a better idea from his, is the Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mr. Lanzafame. Mayor Devine, members of City Council, you are correct. However, I have to clarify that, that the funding doesn't directly go back to the park. We utilize some of the funds from collecting meters to help pay for some of the improvements in the park.
Gotcha. And, and that will be the case with the, these fees, right?
Well, the, these fees, as far as parking's concerned, like Mr. Calvert mentioned, is to replace the loss of revenue. So we are not collecting additional revenue that will help pay for the improvements. It's essentially that the parking fund is taking a hit because we're removing spaces, so we'll not be collecting the, the funds and the meters, so as such, it's just to replace the, the lost revenue.
I understand. Okay, all right. Thank you. So now let's-
Madam Mayor.
Send the phone call.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Brotman?
I, I have some questions. Should I go through the questions first?
Go ahead.
And, okay. So, 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 Mr. Calvert, you're, there are five parklets proposed, is that right? And how many, and each, each is intended to take up two spots, so that's 10 spots that we're giving up? What, what is it, what's the situation today? How many spots are occupied by parklets today?
Right now, I believe we're at 33.
So we're going from 33 down to 10?
Correct.
Okay. And, okay. One other question is, the design, I couldn't really tell, but I think, I think it's the case. The design is gonna be, you're level with the, with the sidewalk, right? There's no step down from the curb?
Correct. There is no step down. You'd be able to roll right from the sidewalk into the parklet.
Okay.
It would be fully ADA compliant, I, I should add to that.
Okay. And, and the fees, I mean, we would charge fees for the parklets. I think we were also waiving fees for just regular sidewalk dining during COVID, is that, is that right?
And that was to last through, I believe, the end of this year, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, through the end of this year, and then the, the sidewalk dining fees would return next year. Unless Council directed otherwise.
We could, so we could have the sidewalk dining fees kick in at the same time we have these parklet fees come along, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, those were my questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Brotman. Okay, are we ready for the phone calls? Let's do it.
Corey? Guralda? Corey, you have three minutes? Corey, can you hear me?
Hello? Yes, I can.
Go ahead, you have three minutes.
All right, thank you. So hello, good afternoon, my name is Corey Guralda, owner of Hostalito's Mexican Food, that has been here in Montrose since 1981. I'm calling today to voice my support on the Alfresco Dining Program in the city of Glendale. I'd like to start out by saying that Bradley has been such a pleasure to work with and has been so informative throughout the planning of this new endeavor. I have seen the renderings of what the new patios would look like, and I think they look amazing, and they fit the aesthetic of Montrose to a T. I'm asking you, councilmembers, to approve the plan so that we can get this going as soon as possible for the merchants that are interested in participating, and for the patrons to once again enjoy Alfresco Dining in our beautiful city. However, can I just want to add this on in, if we could bring those fees down for the parking revenue that's gonna be lost? Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Next caller?
Next caller is on line number two. I don't have your name. It shows me as anonymous. Can you please state your name?
Yes, hello. Actually, I would like to say anonymous, but if you don't mind.
That's fine. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for having me on. I did want to just say that we do have a retail shop on Montrose, oh, excuse me, in Montrose on Honolulu, and actually, the previous Alfresco Dining that was set up there that was temporarily removed because there was a festival happening this coming weekend, was really causing a situation for our clients because they were not being able to park, and this happened to be right in front of our storefront, and actually, a very big inconvenience. And I just hope that the restaurant owners who are in favor of having these Alfresco dining areas would also take in consideration that restaurants on Honolulu that do not require, you know, we're not a restaurant, we don't require Alfresco dining area, really is affecting the whole parking situation for us as retailers. You know, clients that want to just drop by for 10 minutes, 30 minutes, you know, pick something up and leave, it's just very limited parking for us, and I've had lots of customers complain when they've come in because they have to park further, or just the inconvenience of having it. There's trash cans in front of the store that overspill, and it's not always the Alfresco customers that are for the restaurants. There's people that are just passing by and want to sit down, or just a lot of children after 3:00 PM who get out of school. It, you know, they, it's like a space for them to kind of hang out in front of. So it really has kind of been bothersome, and I just really hope that everyone here really takes in consideration the storefronts that are not restaurant-related and don't need the Alfresco dining space, especially when it's right in front of your store and you're a retail store, not a restaurant. So please, I hope you guys look at it with an open view from our side as retailers, not as restaurants. And actually, the restaurants that are nearby where this Alfresco Dining Area was set up were both, they both already have their outdoor dining tables and space set up, so for them to have it right near those two areas, it just does not make any sense for that location. So I just, again, ask that you guys would take that in consideration for the stores that are not restaurants. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Is that it?
That is all the callers.
Oh, okay. So let's hear from my colleagues then. Who would like to begin?
I can, if you would like.
What's that?
Whatever order you want to go in, I, I'm ready.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Mr. Brotman. You go ahead and start us off.
Yeah, first of all, I want to, I want to thank Bradley and staff for doing all the hard work with the Montrose Shopping Park Association and with others who are, I guess, not formally part of the association, but were able to weigh in. It's, it's good because there were some people I remember speaking to back when we were first talking about pulling out the parklets who were adamant, were adamantly opposed to keeping parklets, wanted them gone. And, and they are not restaurants, you know, there, there were people that were complaining because of loss of parking. Anyway, going back to those same people, they are really satisfied with how this has come out. They've, you know, changed their position, and so I think it's a great outcome, and I'm really glad that we, we did go through this effort to try to find a win-win, and I think we found it. I like the designs. The fees, to me, seem appropriate. I think we should start charging the sidewalk fees at the same time we, we start charging for the, the parklet fees, and, you know, and I support this. And again, want to thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brotman. Councilmember Najarian?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do support this. I do understand that there may be an imposition on those businesses that do not, that cannot enjoy dining, they, they can't offer dining to their customers, they're not restaurants or cafes. But I think the, the plan presented is a nice balance, and, and we've gone from, you know, a few months ago, absolutely no outdoor dining, tear them out, to, to yes, we want more, more is better. This is a nice compromise, I think, and I think it'll add to the ambiance, both in Montrose and in the downtown area. So I do support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kusakian?
Thank you. I, I like the proposals. I think it looks much better than what we had thrown together quickly in order to allow restaurants to provide service to patrons that was outside and compliant with whatever guidelines. I think that, you know, the, the look of it, if, if they come out like the renderings, Mr. Calvert and Mr. Lanzafame, I, I think it will be a, well worth the expenditure, and it'll be a job well done. And I also thank you for taking into consideration what the Shopping Park Association and the merchants and the patrons' desires are. I, I do support the collection of fees for the purposes of the use of these spaces. After all, we are losing parking spaces and losing the parking revenue from those spaces, and I think it's only fair that, that and outdoor dining fees go hand in hand, and hopefully the restaurants will comply with those.
Miss, Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Councilmember Agujanian?
Yes. I spoke to merchants on Montrose Park, and apparently, they are happy with this design. They lose the parking spots, but recently, a few days ago, when I was talking to them, apparently, they, they have been part of the process, so I'm glad that, they say they're okay with it. There are no complaint with the way it has been designed by our staff. So with that, I would like to support this, but I want to make sure that if we take money from Measure S, we have to put back. Anyway, that's my position. But however- Anyway, that's my position, but however, Madam Mayor, I would move the item after, of course, when you will speak. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you to my colleagues. Well, I know we've all been through this many times and back and forth, and so it's really great, I think, that we're able to achieve this solution. You know, we're, we're never gonna make all the people happy all the time. We've all gotten emails from residents that, that enjoy having dinner in Montrose, and I've heard from retail owners that this brings customers to them, and so I, I'm really pleased with the, the outcome of these discussions, and, Mr. Calvert, thank you so much for working with all of these groups. I know sometimes it's not easy, but you did a fantastic job. I think the design is gorgeous, and I agree with Mr. Kasakian, please let it look like that when, when they're completed. The lights are terrific, I love the sales, the, the green is great for up there, so it's a huge improvement over what we've had. I hope, my hope is that retail and restaurants will be good neighbors to each other, and they can reach some sort of resolution on, on how fees are paid and, and how, how large they want the, the parklet, et cetera, and I'm happy that you're going to reengage on the fees. I think we have to make sure that, you know, that this is not too cumbersome, but I think in my, our briefing, you mentioned that this fee is, is really quite fair. Is that correct, Mr. Calvert?
Correct, for the use of the parking spaces and the revenue that would be generated there, and then i- it's the standard sidewalk dining permit fee that we would charge on top of that.
Okay, okay, great, then I, I am for this as well. Happy to take Mr. Councilmember Agagianian's motion. Is there a second? Or, and can we do A, B, C, and D together? Mr. Garcia?
Madam Mayor, you can, we just want to make sure that on the motion on D, that it's to provide for the extension of the downtown until February 21st, 2022, and then implement the fees and costs of COVID as identified in the staff report. So if that's the direction, you can make that as part of the motion. Is that part of your motion?
Yes, that's my motion.
All second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Agagianian?
Yes.
Brodmann?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes, and with that, what's next?
Adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
On the motion?
Second.
And a second, all right, we are adjourned at 3:50. Okay, now, next we go to, I will call to order the Glendale City Council meeting for October 19th at 3:50. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Agagianian?
Present.
Brodmann?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
And Mayor Devine?
Here, and what's on the agenda, please?
One would be closed session, one a conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Malika versus the City of Glendale, LASC case number 19STCV20890. B, conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Murphy versus City of Glendale, LASC case number 20STCV29677. C would be conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure litigation pursuant to paragraph subdivision D2 and E1 of the section 54956.9, one potential case. D, conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Badalian versus the City of Glendale, LASC case number 220CV08089, JWHJEM. Next item would be E, conference with labor negotiators, the city designated negotiator attending the closed session, Arubulanyan, Michael J. Garcia, unrepresented employees, executives. F, public employee performance evaluation position, city manager.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Garcia, do you have to report out on any of these items?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, there was another item, Mr. Adjournment, that was added.
Oh, and G would be public employment attorneys.
So with that, Madam Mayor, we do anticipate reporting out on item G.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, then we will recess to closed session. Thank you.